All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Uh, Tom, take your roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Kelly.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Right here.
Baskin.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, item number one is approving of the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we're gonna do roll call votes every, because Jeff is, uh, by Zoom, so Tom, please.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number two is motion approving the minutes from our August seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number three, under recognition and awards, we have none. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda with the addition of s- uh, snack attack liquor, edible cannabinoids, and tobacco. With that, need a motion for the consent.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Abstain.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number five is a motion approving the Hormel Foundation grant request rankings. Thomas?
Before you tonight is the official ranking after our work session discussion last week where the ten projects were ranked by the City Council based on what their favorites are. The first one is a chip program through the HRA, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Second favorite, Emerald Ash Board Treatment slash Planning, seventy- planting, seventy-five thousand. Number three, Single Family Lot Incentive, two hundred thousand. Number four, Band Shell Improvements for seventy-one thousand, two fifty. Number five, Hot Spot Program at the Library for sixty thousand. Number six, Handicap Elevator Lift Replacement at Riverside Arena for fifty thousand. Number seven, Nature Center Education Programs for fifty thousand. Number eight, Fire Prevention and Education for five thousand. Number nine, Ruby Rootner Facility Upgrades for seventy-five thousand. Number ten, Hormel Nature Center Radios for thirteen grand. We will submit this to the Foundation. It'll go to their Contributions Committee in probably early December. We'll see how things, uh, turn out. Let- in twenty twenty-three, we got roughly four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in grants from the Foundation, so we're hopeful to be at least in that range this year.
Excellent. Thank you. It's very generous of the Hormel Foundation, as always, to consider what we might think of as priorities that may rise to the top, see what they might choose, and, uh, we're looking forward to seeing what that, uh, what those requests, uh, come in as. Thank you, Tom. Need a motion to accept those, uh, rankings?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Absolutely.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six, Resolution Approving Austin Utilities Service Territory Expansion. We talked about that at the work session. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number seven is motion adopting a policy for outside entity participation. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Sure thing.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eight is Resolution Approving a Memorandum of Agreement with Hormel Foods for the Bike Skills Course.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Thomas. Item number nine is a, uh, motion and ordinance, approving the ordinance for a cannabis, cannabis moratorium. Mr. Byram, do you have anything for us on that any further?
Uh, not beyond what we talked about at work session.
All right. Council looking for a motion to prepare the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And a resolution or a motion to approve the ord- uh, uh, ordinance, uh, for adoption of the publication?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number ten is, uh, reviewing an ordinance for the use of cannabis and cannabinoid products. Uh, motion for ten A is for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Give him a motion for the adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Thomas?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Yes.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's give Thomas a little break here. Item number eleven is Resolution Approving a Limited Use Permit with MinDOT for the I ninety Bridge Replacement Project. Stephen?
This document details some city requested infrastructure that's planned to be constructed within the MinDOT right-of-way as part of the I ninety bridges. So at each bridge, there generally is planned to be some sidewalk or trail construction across those bridges that comes at the request of the city of Austin to complete just, uh, pedestrian trail connections and sidewalks throughout our community. We have, uh, locations include Oakland Avenue West Bridge, Fourteenth Street Northwest, Fourth Street Northwest, Eleventh Drive, Twenty-first Street Northeast. Uh, there is a portion of, uh, trail along Eighth Avenue Northeast, just, uh, northwest of East Side Lake where that trail, uh, currently, uh, encroaches into MinDOT right-of-way. And then we also have our existing trail connections out at the Nature Center. We have a, a trail connection at Twenty-first Street and Twenty-eighth Street that are already constructed and within the MinDOT right-of-way. So this just, um, memorializes, uh, some existing and future trail and sidewalk connections. It details the city's responsibility in that this is a ten-year agreement. The city is responsible toward paying the construction costs of these items. Many of them, if not all of them, are included in the seven percent allocation that is allotted for this project, this overall bridge project. Um, some of the existing ones, the city did previously construct with, with our own funds or grants. In the future, we're responsible for maintenance and repair of this infrastructure and, um, maintaining this permit with MinDOT should it expire in ten years, uh, just re- re-adopting it or reviewing it at that time. So, uh, with that, we would recommend approval of this limited use permit with MinDOT.
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number twelve is Resolution Approving an Off-Sale Liquor License to Apollo Retail LLC Doing Business As Snack Attack Liquor Number Three. Anne?
Um, yes, this is just a resolution approving that off-sale liquor license. Um, they have passed the background checks and had all the applicable insurance come through. Um, so we would just request you approve that one.
Council, any questions? If not, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number thirteen is Resolution Approving a Memorandum of Agreement with UAW eight-six-seven, uh, Parks for their participation in the Minnesota State Retirement System Healthcare Savings Plan. Craig?
Uh, thank you, Mayor members. This is requested by the Parks members. They would like to adjust their contributions amount. This is no cost to the city. Um, otherwise, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number fourteen, uh, is, uh, a motion, at least one property, the other one cleaned up, granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. Fourteen A is four oh six Second Street Southeast, the Ragor property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Very good. Under the additions, uh, the fifteen is Resolution Granting a Hard Liquor On-Sale License to Austin Bruins LLC Doing Business As Austin Bruins.
No.
Looking for a resolution for item number fifteen.
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now we're on to citizens addressing the council. Looks like we have a fuller house by about sixty people more than we usually have, so I'm sure you have folks that might want to step to the microphone and give us some comments. Charles, you raise your hand first. You can step to the microphone. Name an address, please, and then, uh, comments if you could.
Thank you, Council. I am not here to speak about personnel issues, but we've had an occurrence and the newspaper, I think, covered it very, very well. And I don't want to get into that part of it, but in reading the article and talking to other people, there seems to be a severe lack of understanding in what the city charter is saying and different interpretations. I happen to be on the Charter Commission, and I'm not looking for more work by any means, but I think we need to be very specific in what it says. Uh, and when there, when there's confusion and when there's personnel issues, I think that's detrimental to the function of the city. Dan Merrill was, I, I considered him a friend. He came into town with ton of enthusiasm, lots of great ideas, a hard worker, and I'm, I, I'm gonna miss him, and I hope Austin misses him also. I've been here since two thousand and six. I'm very pleased to be a resident of Austin, and I'm enjoying it. But let's look at how we communicate and how we put things forward so that I, I feel that a ninth grader should be able to read our city charter and understand what it says. And I think if it does not meet that criteria, we have missed the, missed the point.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate your service on that mission. Anybody else looking to, uh, speak? John Martin, name and address, please.
John Martin, Austin, Minnesota, former City Council member, John P. Martin, um, lifelong resident of Austin, Minnesota. Couple months ago, I went to a county commissioner meeting, and I read on the riot act about this exact kind of stuff with this park and rec. For all, I don't, like I told the county commissioners, my goal, or anybody's goal should not be to get anybody into trouble, but we need to fix these issues within the community. A lot of these issues have been going on for well over a hundred years. Now, like I said, I don't want to get anybody into trouble, but you all need to be educated on some stuff. Years ago, I'm not gonna mention any names, but we've had judges involved in financing the drug trade. We have attorneys involved in transporting, import-export of the drug trade and also doing the product and selling the product themselves. We have business people in this community that have done the same thing. And now you all sit here and say, oh, we're worried about our kids and this new marijuana laws and all this stuff, and we don't want our kids to be drinking and doing weed and all this stuff. I get that, and I agree with that, but, um, lost my train of thought here. Um, it's, how, how can you be that hypocritical to say this, but then you're doing that? We have a lot of issues within our criminal justice system. We have police officers who are doing the same thing as the other individuals I mentioned, and this is goes, I'm not saying just currently, I'm saying for overall the decades. It's a dirty town. This is a corrupt town. This is the main reason why I got on the City Council in two thousand and six or I ran for it. But then I realized, or I, I, you know, discovered that you don't play the game, you get pushed. What I think should happen here in the city, everybody on the top, at the very top of their jobs should be terminated and get rid of because it's a toxic work environment in all, most of these positions, if not all of them, and it needs to change. Um, and when people are getting into some trouble or whatever, and they're in front of a judge, and the judge will say, well, you need anger management, or you should get caught into behavioral therapy, and this and that, and the county backs these programs up, and the city council backs up these programs, why don't you get together and practice and utilize the goals that you tell all of us to utilize in that place? Why don't you all do it? Oh, this town's got some serious frickin' issues.
Thank you, John.
And we need to come up with some kind of a committee or something to really address this stuff. This is serious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, uh, agree with your perspective. I appreciate you voicing your opinion, so thank you.
Well, I like to say, when I was on the City Council too, Austin is a beer-drinking, redneck, mother's fucking town, and also.
Anybody else?
I've been all these.
John, John, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, boy. Sorry, that's too, you'll, you can be next. Name and address, please.
Dixie Gilbertson, twenty-four oh one Eleventh Avenue Southwest in Austin here, and I've been a resident since I was two weeks into the, the town. So I just would like to say that we would like to be informed and be able to work as a community together with all of you, and I think we just need to be informed on what's happening. I guess I'm probably rep- representing our pickleball area more than anything, um, just to get some recreational, uh, things going, and I would just like to be able to work with each of you. What you guys do is wonderful, and if everybody else here thinks that your job is easy, it's not, and if they do, then they should be there. So I, I appreciate and I respect you guys. I just think that maybe we need to be informed a little bit better on, on how to get things passed through the City Council. And does the City Council and the park and rec, are they, do they have to, does the City Council have to approve what the park and rec does, or does the park and rec have their own direct ability to do their things on their own? And then the other question I have, since we don't have a director of the park and rec, who are we supposed to go to? So if we could maybe resolve some of that, it'd be great.
Thank you, Dixie. I'll, I'll have some comments at the very end if everybody's through, but pickleball is, uh, in competition with cane ball, but I know that there's, uh, with our Parks Master Plan, pickleball is highly regarded, and I hope, we hope to get some pickleball courts. Anybody else?
I can make one comment on that, too. We had a good conversation before the meeting on pickleball, and I think we'll set up a conversation probably offline to, to talk about some options, because I'm not as good at pickleball as I'd like to be, but if we get some courts, maybe I'll get better.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Deanna Jean Reither. My address says that I'm in Austin, but I'm actually in Lansing Township, but I work. My children go to school. I do all of my stuff here in town, fourteen-year resident. I would just like to give kudos to our Parks and Administration, our law enforcement. They do a lot of hard work in a constantly changing community. There's been a lot of changes here since I've moved here. I feel it's important that we have, uh, consistent transparency. That's why we have all these different platforms. And beyond having consistent transparency, we have to have a community that is willing to be involved and engaged, and I think that we have lacked as a community in that area significantly. Um, just another concerned citizen for the discussion that came up, the, the, uh, the post that was posted on Facebook, that was through the Parks and Recs Department. I wouldn't know that that was the most appropriate platform, but it did certainly stir a lot of concern and questions that have every legitimacy to be addressed. Um, and I also just want to commend our state on joining the rest of the nation on legalizing cannabis. I have been a very strong advocate for many, many years, as a lot of you know. I share a lot of the same concerns. I don't want to see kids having access. Um, I want safe access for people who choose it as a recreation or benefit from it medicinally. Um, so I'm definitely interested to see the proposed ordinance on that. I took a pretty significant step back in my activism and coming to City Council meetings, but, uh, definitely trying to come back into that role because it's important. We're only as strong as, uh, the members of the community allow it to be. So I had stand, stood here years ago saying there would be cannabis dispensary shops on Main Street, and I was laughed at by that administration, but here we are today, and, uh, I want a safe community. I have adult children now. I now have grandchildren. Uh, I live in a hundred-plus-year century farm, so being able to relocate is not an option, nor do I want to relocate. Austin has a lot of benefits, a lot of opportunity, and there is a lot of growth happening, and I'm really excited for that. So I just want to see the community come together. I'd like to see a more progressive approach by City Council and, and making things possibly more transparent. I don't know what that would entail, but thank you for your service. It takes a community to run a community, and it is, it is difficult. It's difficult to stand up here. It's, I'm sure, more difficult to sit up there and hear from begrudging, uh, citizens. So God bless you all, and, uh, let's make this a more godly community like it was when I came here.
Thank you, Ms. Reither. I remember you from, maybe it was ten years ago on that cannabis. You were a proponent of it years and years and years ago, but.
So I moved here in two thousand and nine, six weeks after I had brain surgery from Boulder, Colorado area. Um, I would not be standing here speaking today if I had not had access to the cannabis treatments I had access to. I spent many, many years going back and forth, leaving my family for months of time to have those, uh, treatments. It was, uh, incredibly difficult. I was shamed, shunned, ostracized. Um, I was kicked out of the farmer's market. I helped recreate. I, I'm the one who secured the location, uh, for the Austin Farmer's Market that really is beautiful. I'm super thankful for the Austin Parks and Rec to adopt that space and help, you know, so I've definitely made an impression on this community, and my intention is to commu- continue to do so in the most positive, responsible, and respectable manner that I can. I'm, I'm no longer legally, I guess, you know, I don't know. It's, it's been a weird, crazy journey. If you would have asked me back then if I'd be standing in front of the City Council or dealing with all the things I've had to deal with, I would have laughed at you. Um, I did not want to have brain surgery. I was a drooling vegetable at the time, and cannabis afforded me the opportunity to heal through that, and I want to be able to have the opportunity to help others. Again, um, our children's safety is at the forefront of my mind. Uh, we have a lot of issues in town. We're all aware of that. We've got bad drugs. We've got kids that are misguided. We need more resources, more programs. We have a lot of buildings that are sitting empty that could be filled with, uh, benefits. So let's make Austin stronger.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Anybody else wish to speak? All right. Oh, okay. My up, sir? Name and address, please.
Hi there. It's, uh, David Rappelson, eleven ten Fifth Street Northwest in Austin. And I guess my only concern tonight is, first of all, thank you for the job that you do, but my concern is regarding Park and Rec and who's ever the new director coming in, that if we don't resolve this situation between, okay, do we have the Park and Rec Charter, or do we have the city charter? Park and Rec is gonna be right back where it is now. Who's ever coming in? If they don't have a clear understanding which charter, you know, do I have to live by, he's gonna be trying to ride that same fence that, okay, who's my boss, and what, what leeways, what freedoms do I have? So I think that really needs to be resolved before we hire somebody for that position, or you're gonna be, whoever it is, is probably gonna be short-lived here in Austin, unfortunately. So, so I, I mean, that's my only comment. I think we really need to resolve which charter does that individual go by. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? All right. Uh, please allow me to read this, uh, statement here. Uh, "We appreciate the passion which brings you here tonight. We all find incredible value in our Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. That includes our facilities, programs, and employees who help make this a reality. We all agree the amenity of our park system is one of the most important and treasured jewels of the city, and there's a little fun fact that Park and Rec was my first employer here in Austin as a youth doing lifeguarding here. Um, I have, my, my heart's in it. I, my heart's with all city employees. Park and Rec is no, no different. Uh, the city of Austin dedicates in excess of four point three million dollars for this vital department annually, and Austin by objective measure spends more on parks and recreation than nearly any other similarly sized community in the state of Minnesota. We do not, uh, shrink from this, but rather promote it for what it is, a better quality of life which is affordable and accessible to all. Our parks, programs, and facilities are open and warmly received, all who enter and provide memories for things like learning how to ice skate for the first time or raising a youth championship trophy, or even a participation ribbon. Indeed, formative life lessons and longtime friendships happen at our facilities. The differing opinions of the charter is something, uh, being discussed. What you may not know is the City Council and Park Board worked with the League of Minnesota Cities during a two-day weekend facilitation sta- session with the objective, with an objective third party that was selected by both representatives' views to increase understanding of each other's positions. From that discussion, the city adopted new procedures to clarify and ensure Park Board requests would receive fair consideration, as well as gain a better understanding of the concerns and work better together going forward. The goal was never to provide a resolution of the differences of opinions on the city's charter, and there is one charter. There's a provision within the charter for the Park and Rec, but there is one charter. Our city attorney provided a clear, extensive, and well-reasoned opinion on the charter. That lack of resolution continued to fester by some personalities, and when it came up most recently, the City Council provided a unified opinion that I feel has us in a position to turn the corner on this divisive issue and move on to what will be an immensely promising future. We have an accountable chain of command responsive to the voters, and our resolutions, policies, and procedures directs the city administrator to coordinate the direction of the city, uh, the council through this position. To that end, all the department heads are accountable to this structure. Park and Recreation is no different in the respect, uh, in this respect, and has functioned under this structure for as long as I can remember with no issues. This is not unique to the city of Austin and its conventional method of local government and private employers. Recently, the community played a significant role in contributing ideas to the new Parks Master Plan, which when concluded will inform investments over the coming decades for enhancements of our park system. We welcome anyone with a passion for the city of Austin to look for any, uh, of the many ways to make Austin an even stronger community. Council directed the posting of the position, and our hopes is to have a replacement by the close of October. I am confident in our employment system and that we will find a gifted director and continue to promote our, promote our Parks and Recreation services. In the interim, we have a strong staff at the department, and I am confident all will make sure nothing is left undone, and we will continue to deliver the services our residents expect. Thank you for coming tonight and expressing your opinions."
Mr. King, can I make a request?
Sure, John.
My request is that... My request is that people don't be quiet, just like in the sheriff issue. All of a sudden, we got somebody that's holding the sheriff accountable, then all of a sudden, everybody gets quiet and nobody will say nothing. That's why, part of the reason why we're in the situation we are.
Thank you.
Employees fear for their jobs. You should not fear for your job at your place of employment, whether it be the county, the city, or anyplace else.
Thank you, John. All right. Um, moving on to citizens, we did that honorary council. We don't have one now, but I, I made a contact with, uh, one, and I'm meeting with that person on Monday, hoping to have an honorary council member back in the spot by, you know, a couple of weeks. Um, reports and recommendations. Craig?
I have nothing.
City Council, Joyce?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody that did come today and to, to hear what, uh, was all said. I think it's very important that the community does get involved. I like what was said. There was some... what was said. There was some, uh, you know, especially those that got up and spoke respectfully. Um, this is a hard job. None of us have it easy up here. Um, and, and I did take away that, uh, you know, we do need some better clarification on the charter, um, prior to the new director, and I, I think that's, we're definitely working on that. Um, uh, let me just check my notes here for a second. Um, you know, and, and I, I, I think it's just really important that anytime that you have, uh, an opinion, um, or anything that you want to let us know, any, any ideas, that you do come to the meeting. We, 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 it's the only way we can hear your voices. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Joyce. Paul?
Uh, I'll echo that. Thank you, everybody, for coming and showing your support for, uh, the Park and Rec. It is something we value, and also thank you, Mayor, for the clarification on what you just read, everybody.
Thanks, Paul. JJ?
Yeah, I would like to echo that, and thank you, everybody, for coming. I mean, I think in general, we make better decisions when people are involved, and it's gra- I would love to see every meeting with this many people in it, because I think at the end of the day, we're accountable to the voters, and the more that we hear from the voters, the better we are. Um, I would share, you know, thank you for your statement, Mr. Mayor. I thought it was very well played. Um, and I, the only thing I would add is, you know, there's two sides to every story. Getting into the details of every specific story in public is not always in the best interest of the city, but what I can tell you is, I liked Mr. Merrill personally very, very much. I think he had great energy and did a lot of positive things within the department. Um, as was alluded to in the statement, we spent many, many hours behind the scenes, listening, talking, working through issues, trying to find common ground. And, you know, I think what this boils down to is you have a difference of opinion on, you know, powers, and, you know, what I appreciate about the process that we've gone through is a couple members of the Park and Rec Board, and ultimately some folks within Park and Rec had one perspective. I think there probably are some things we could do from a charter perspective to make it crystal clear. At the same time, I have clarity. We have a fifteen-page, incredibly comprehensive, well-written memo by city attorney Byram, who went back to the original charter conversations, made it very clear, here's the case law, here's everything, and it's a public document. You know, I thought it was very, very well-written. At the end of the day, we don't have to agree on everything, and I thought Councilman Postma put it very well years, or several months ago as we talked through this, which is, there are some people that get frustrated and say that we're not listening. And the reality is, there's a difference between not listening and not agreeing. Ultimately, as our job, we're accountable to the voters. We're accountable to make sure that the voters have their voice heard, and I think we had very good clarity from our city attorney in terms of what the charter says. People don't necessarily have to agree with that, but at the end of the day, as a council, we have one city attorney who we trust, who has incredible, you know, legal scholar and views, and, you know, a very nice job of showing, here are the facts. I think there's two sides to every story, and at the end of the day, I am optimistic that we are gonna make it through and ultimately end up at a place that these changes are going to be constructive, because we can finally get back to talking about how do we benefit the overall City of Austin, and how do we make Park and Rec as good as it can be, instead of worrying about personality conflicts and disagreements. So, thank you.
Well said, Jason. Thank you. Uh, Jeff Austin by Zoom, anything?
Uh, no, nothing, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeff?
You know, I don't know that I can add much. Um, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that we're here. I, I'm sorry that we got to a point where we, um, couldn't resolve something, um, and it got to a boiling point, and, and for that, I personally apologize. Um, I agree with a lot of what has been said, but, uh, we've got work to do. We know that. Um, and, uh, I absolutely appreciate the, the thoughts and the insights, and, uh, hopefully we'll learn from this and get better.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
Um, yeah, I would just sort of echo most of the statements. I really did appreciate what, uh, the mayor's statement, uh, a lot of what Councilman Baskin talked about. You know, we, this has been something that, um, has been worked on behind the scenes, honestly, since I probably got on council two and a half years ago, at least the majority of that time, including a full weekend of mediation, and some real progress was made. Some things that were concerns got addressed in a way that satisfied all parties. And at the end of the day, we just came down to a point where there was some disagreements, and we have a charter that we had interpreted by our city attorney, and the entire council looked at it the same way, and it, that's what I support. Ultimately, I support that the elected body, which in this case is the city council folks, you know, we're the ones that are ultimately responsible. Um, and other cities have different structures. Other cities have elected park boards. Other cities have taxing power for their park boards. Those are much bigger, different cities. I support our Parks Department. I'm really excited about some of the things in the master plan, um, some things that we can do to bring things like pickleball and cane ball to Austin, because I know that there's a lot of citizens looking for that, while supporting all the many great programs that we have, from baseball to hockey, to just walking on the trails. So, um, I really do hope that while we will continue to do some work on clarifications, um, that having this new position posted and w- will go well, and we'll have somebody new on board that you'll be able to ask your questions to very soon. Um, I will say, as far as there was a mention for some transparency, uh, one of the things I kind of struggled when I got this position was how to interact with folks and let them know where I've had on issues. So I know, at least myself, I have a Councilman Mike Postma Facebook page, and I generally post an update after every city council meeting on a couple of topics. We all have our phone numbers and our emails published in the paper, on the city website. We would love to hear from you on this or any other issue, and we appreciate you coming tonight to make your voices heard.
Thank you, Mike. Laura?
Uh, so, um, we're all talking about Parks Recreation and Forestry, and I'm gonna do the same, but with a little different tack. Um, I want to specifically thank, uh, Randy Hoffner, who's here tonight, and his crew amidst all of this, uh, drama and extra things going on. They got our festival flags out on Main Street to let us all know that festival is coming this weekend. So it's August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. It is not too late to sign up for volunteering. Two-hour shift, you get a free T-shirt. Um, it's all online. There'll be music. There will be, um, authors. There will be art to make and art to see. So please come and bring your family and volunteer if you're able. Um, because school starts on Monday morning, the Sunday afternoon cleanup shift at four PM is our toughest one. So if you happen to be a household that's not sending people off to school Monday morning, consider, um, uh, volunteering for that. Uh, also, related with Parks Recreation and Forestry and the Culture and Arts Commission, um, we got some grant funding from CMAC to put a grant on the east wall of the municipal pool building. It is going up. You can see it now. Um, it will be finished by September eighth, and we'll be doing a mural, um, dedication. And so, uh, thank you to the, um, Parks staff, particularly the pool manager, who's been a, a great, uh, resource as we get that mural up. Uh, go, go see it. Uh, go take a selfie with it, and, um, post to social media, please. Uh, and finally, um, I am the council representative for the Parks Recreation and Forestry Board. That means I sit on that board as well. Um, I think, uh, I know people ask about transparency, and I just want to point out that you, there are many public documents involved with the city. You can see meeting minutes of city council meetings. You can see the videos. You can see for yourself, um, the things that are going on. I encourage you to do that. Uh, I also encourage you to serve, if you're able, on a board or commission. We have eleven different boards and commissions. It so happens we have some openings on the Parks Recreation and Forestry. Um, so you can go to the city website, search for boards and commissions. It's a two-page application. Uh, you, you don't have to have a degree. You don't have to, um, have a fancy job title. You just have to be a resident who cares about our community. And, um, we'd lo- I, I, seeing this passion of people who care here in the room is great, and if anybody's ready to take it to the next step, um, please, uh, consider boards and commissions. Um, also, because of my position on that board, I will be part of the job search team for the next director. So know that I have noted all of your comments, and we'll take that, um, as we move forward, looking for the person to take over. Um, take over what, what truly is, um, an amazing community, Parks Recreation and Forestry. Um, our nature center alone is the envy of many communities, and that's only part of our park system. So it's a, it is a great job. It's a great opportunity. Um, yes, we can do some things better, uh, and I believe that we will. So, that's it.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, counsel, for all your thoughtful words, and thank you for those that attended today and those that spoke. I know it's not easy. Um, we all have a point of view. I want it to be heard, and it was heard. Uh, please know the city council values all of our departments, and, uh, we will move forward. Thank you. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn to September fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We are adjourned.